Let me start?
Sure.
Okay. All right, chapter four, Arch the Herald Angels Sing. So we're talking about the angels and the shepherds. So we're to the Christmas story where those angels, which is frequently people talk about those angels and they hearing that. And did the angels sing? It doesn't say.
Sometimes it does.
Yeah, praising God and saying glory to God in the highest heaven and on earth peace among those whom he favors. So, but again, they were together, they're praising God. So when we do the Psalms, you know, you can read them, but probably early on, I mean, the Psalms were songs as well. They sang them.
I mean, yeah, just like a chant or a, you know, that would make anything singing.
So, so they were definitely praising with the energy and stuff too. So, so we'll be talking about these angels and the shepherds and we watching the video. So what song are we singing this week?
Oh, okay.
We could do the scripture first, but.
Okay.
Whether.
It came upon a midnight flare, first two verses.
Okay. So let's take turns reading the scripture. So Luke, chapter two, it's the Christmas story. It doesn't go all the way to, usually you go one to 20, but this is, we're just talking about the angels. So if someone would like to start reading.
In those days, a decree went out from Emperor Augustus that all the world should be registered. This was the first registration and was taken while by Renius was governor of Syria. All went to their own towns to be registered.
And somebody else read.
Joseph went, also went from the town of Nazareth in Galilee to Judea, to the city of David called Bethlehem, because he was descended from the house and family of David. He went to be registered with Mary, to whom he was engaged, and he was expecting a child. While they were there, the time came for her to deliver her child. And she gave birth to her firstborn son and wrapped him in bands of cloth and laid him in a manger, because there was no place for them in the inn.
And another?
In that region, there were shepherds living in the fields, keeping watch over their flock by night. Then an angel of the Lord stood before them, and the glory of God, the Lord, shone around them, and they were terrified. But the angel said to them, do not be afraid, for see, I am bringing you good news of great joy for all the people. To you is born this day in the city of David, a Savior, who is the Messiah, the Lord.
This will be a sign for you. You will find a child wrapped in bands of cloth and lying in a manger. And suddenly there was with the angel, a multitude of heavenly hosts praising God and saying, glory to God in the highest heaven and on earth peace among those whom he favors.
All right. So let's say verse 14 altogether.
Glory to God in the highest heaven and on earth peace among those whom he favors.
Amen.
Now, as I was thinking about this too, and it says they're praising God and saying, in the words that they're sharing and what had happened, how could they not have this energy? So I thought, how about we try to say it monotone? So let's say it monotone, no energy, no praise. Ready?
Glory to God in the highest heaven and on earth peace among those whom he favors.
Ain't it hard to do it that way? I. The, the message, the word, what the angels were doing, that the multitude of the heavenly hosts, there were tons of them there. We, we don't know how many, just like we don't know how many kings were there. But the multitude, there were lots there praising God, coming together and sharing this glory. It wasn't monotone. It had lots of energy and lots of passion for our Lord. Lots of passion for Jesus coming into the world, you know, just the amazing gift that it is. So these angels are sharing this, and that's the way we need to be sharing that same message with that passion. Let's pray. Gracious God, we are so grateful to come together and continue to learn more about you and more about your word and how it can change our lives and help us be your witnesses. We thank you that the angels came to the shepherds. We thank you that Jesus came into the world. And the whole story of Christmas just is so passionate, but so many people observe Christmas, but not Christ. And so we thank you that we can come together and be encouraged and strengthened and have that passion of the glory of God here with us. Not just on Christmas, not just to the shepherds, not just in the manger, but every day, the glory of Jesus Christ is with us. So we thank you and praise you for the ways you will continue to be in our lives. And we will have that passion and energy. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Let's sing. That's for two verses. Do you want to go on? So we can go on, so. So lots of angels in Christmas. As we look at the different book, one of the things that the author talks about is trying to put yourself in the situation. What if you were one of the shepherds?
Would have been scared to death.
What would your reaction be?
I really would ran.
Think about the light they would have.
Pardon me?
Think about the light they would have. Out in the hills, the only light they have is maybe if they had a fire. And then. Yeah.
Nice and quiet.
Yeah, nice and quiet. Maybe the wind, just a gentle breeze. Or it's going to be turned upside down.
Yeah, I questioned that I would have automatically gone.
Yeah.
It's like quickly they said, fear not.
And I wonder how many actually went to stable. Somebody probably had to stay behind.
It didn't say, didn't say for sure what happens, yeah.
Took all sheep with them.
It sounds like a very poor life. I saw some pictures over in Israel.
Yeah.
Where they give some pants and go in and out and rugged ground rock.
Oh, yeah, it's.
Very little grazing.
It's not like good pastors or feels like we have. Yeah, it's a lot different, yeah.
Rocky and they gotta move them a lot because the grass isn't very good. So, you know, as soon as they get it grazed down, you gotta move them and probably kind of lonely.
That's why David took his harp. And bring his music.
And we saw, sang that song last week. Harp.
No? So, and how would you respond when the, when the angels say that there's a Messiah born and you should go there? How would you feel?
Well, it depends on if you had heard this story. Because they're pretty isolated, shepherds are. I'm maybe not back then as much as what, when I was in Israel, I saw them to be. But if you would already heard the story and the prophecy, it might be easier than if you'd never heard the story and didn't know what they were talking about. But evidently they had heard this story. I just, I don't know, I just cannot fathom being the shepherd at all.
But, and then again, today Jews have heard the story that the Messiah is to come. Been waiting a while.
Yeah.
And they probably talked about it for years, history.
We know people that drive halfway across the United States if there's a revival. You know, signs and wonders.
Or even from.
If you're looking for something like that, oh, there's a rapture. Where is it? A little too late.
Sorry, best of all. Well, that's a good question too. I mean, you know, does God come when we least expect it, like the shepherds? Or do we, do we supposed to like go find the revivals, go find those things? You know, is that the way things are supposed to happen? That we take the initiative? Or wait for God to take the initiative? Or both?
So some people, Hartford City, that put that tent up on the square.
Yeah.
People came to check that out. Somebody told me about it. I thought, where's that? I don't know, somewhere downtown.
I tell you.
Then you found it, found it right where it was.
Yeah, I had to go check it out. We used to go to camp meetings. Randolph County, Blackford County, and they have it in the cornfield. Sometimes they, yeah, they had put up a tent and have chairs out. So God used to chase those things.
Camp meetings have been a part of Methodism as long as it's really been in the United States. And really how it got its start and how the brother in church got formed too out of Wesleyan camp, camp meetings.
I remember going to Billy Sunday Capernacle, I know a lake. That was a big thing. It might start at 10:00.
Grape Harbor meetings. What is that? But it was fascinating. It was exciting. We had a visitor last night. Talk, 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 talk. She said, I defied, I defied the laws of science. Well, being a science minor, I perked up, you know, she said, I should have gone through the windshield. I heard a voice said, put on your seatbelt. I think the word, the voice was put on your seatbelt now. And she thought, well, I'll do it later. Bam, car was totaled. Two others in the car had seatbelt rashes, you know, and contusions. Car was totaled. She said, I was, don't remember the word, cradled or held, I was held in place. I should have gone. You can't stop a car like that, that going through the windshield. Should have been at our Bible study. We told. Yeah. So things, I think often do just happen, you know, I'm not prepared for it. Didn't see that coming. Like when they heard the word suddenly, suddenly, the multitude was there. Like the news, you listen to the news, now you do that swish thing now, anchor base may swoosh. Well, it's there, more news.
Yeah, I thought this story is amazing how many times God visited people and told them about the, uh, Jesus being born. And it wasn't by telephone. There was no such thing. Isn't that amazing?
There's some other questions here. Why do you think the angels deemed it necessary in their encounter with Mary Joseph, Philesema, Zechariah, and later the women who came to the tomb on Easter morning, to reassure them that they need not be afraid? When an angel comes, why do they have to say, don't be afraid?
What do angels look like? I mean, this is a surprise, a light in the middle of the desert? I mean, they don't have many movies with CGI to watch, and so, I mean, it would be so far outside their understanding.
We think of just human nature, unfortunately, of people that are different. People always question or, you know, they assume things about, well, just think how different an angel must have been so far outside any kind of experience previously or whatever that that statement would just, you know, because you tend to be afraid and I don't.
Well, there wasn't any social media to warn other people that, oh, there's angels. This is, this is what they look like.
Right.
You know, I mean, it was like a dry.
Well, I'm sure that the angels knew that they would be afraid.
Yeah, so that was comforting in nature.
Yeah.
Back to the Greek, anglos, ends in O S, which is masculine. So there's something, especially if there are Old Testament war going on, that's a force to be afraid of. Friend or foe, I don't know.
So looking at the scripture again, the first angel stood before them. And, and then going down to the rest. A multitude of heavenly hosts was there. Now, were they standing or were they up in the sky? And what did you always picture in the sky? That's what I always picture. It doesn't say again for sure, but again, that if it, you know, something that's, that's flying up there, that's not the usual thing. That's not.
I think because of the sound too, just the idea of being encompassed with sound all around you.
If there are a lot of angels, you might have heard their wings flapping.
If they have.
That would have been sight to see.
Could have been a jetpack.
There's a science.
So then they ask this question, why do you think our initial impulse to something unexpected is fear? Why do we do that?
Because we're human. I mean, I think anything, anything that's the unknown or anything, the unknown is fearful, because until we know, we don't know how we're going to react.
So do we have to know everything?
We think we do.
Which, which means we think that, so what do we, you know, what are we going to believe and know, understand what heaven is like, what glory is like, what holiness is like? And were the angels so holy and pure that it was? Whoa. I mean, have you seen whether the sunrise, a sunset, or some image, or some beautiful birds, or, or a beautiful person, or that's like, that they're, they're so holy, so pure, so, so good. You know, that it's so different, you know, that it's surprising and, and how that, and I think the angel would have to be that way. Like, wow.
The phrase that came to mind when you said that was trust and obey. Do we, do we always trust first, or do we analyze the situation? And then decide either I can handle it, or okay, Lord is yours. Are we already in that trust and obey mode? You know, or, or do we go the human mode first?
I think a lot of it has to do with the way you're brought up too. Because I think, I think, you know, should the Lord come today, if you were brought up in the church to think that way, it would be far easier to accept and to acknowledge that this was prophesized. Then it would be somebody that's never thought about that or never been, you know, educated on Christ.
And with that though too, from when I've worked with Valley of Grace and Hope House, people who did not know Jesus before, but now know Jesus' grace and forgiveness and transformation and strength for them to not do drugs and alcohol and to know a piece. There's an amazing power and, and the trust and obey, the obedience there. And I love that the shepherds too, while the shepherds were afraid at first and then got to see and hear this praise, then they were obedient. They went. And it didn't, I just love the story too, the shepherds, they went to see Mary and Joseph and baby Jesus, they went to the manger. And then they went home, right? They went back to the sheep, right?
Probably not.
No, no. They spread the word, yeah. They didn't just go back. Oh, that was great. You know, we'll, we'll put that in our journal. You know, they were obedient to the next step, go and tell. You know, they were obedient to what God's calling them to do. And again, shepherds probably weren't speaking people. You know, they, they weren't ones that interacted a lot. They weren't ones that had the education, you know, they weren't ones that, you know, were extroverts. But they went and did because it was so amazing and so wonderful. You know, what their experience was, was so amazing, so wonderful. So they went on. So for us, and that's what I pray, that every church member and everybody that we've talked to has that amazing experience of Jesus. Has that, you know, again, we may not have an angel come, but we should have that, that praise and that glory. Again, the, this, the scripture, you know, that we share, you know, if we try to glory to God in the highest heaven and on earth peace among those whom he favors. Oh, glory to God. I mean, it should come with such energy. And so when we invite people to church, when we tell people about Jesus, when we, we talk about our experience, it should have some energy to it. You know, because of what God has done. So, yeah, that's, that's the way the shepherds were. And so it's, it's a great example that anybody can do this. Anybody can go in town, you know, and that God can come to any person as well.
Right. And, and that's something we have to keep in mind, because sometimes we discount somebody telling us a story, because you're like the shepherds. We don't think in those terms, but you know, if you look back at The Chosen, when the shepherd was entered at the Pharisee, and it was like the Pharisee said, you shouldn't even be talking to me. And, you know, so sometimes we're being disposed to.
It was a strict class system. I mean, you know, you think of the Americans, if you think of, you know, they, they were real good. We're not now. Um, they were really good at having stereotypes and judging people according to maybe their occupation or where they came from, you know, Nazareth, yeah.
And, yeah, places like India have classes very much.
They don't have untouchables anymore because they, they pass a law that there won't be untouchable. So that now they call them something else.
And, and we might think that the United States doesn't have classes, but we do. So we did a study, again, it's trying to help people. Most of us are middle class, so we have a certain kind of understanding. And the study shared that if we were around rich people, most of us would not do well. They would not work with us. They would not want to be around us. It said, rich people, you don't talk first. You have to be introduced.
Uh-oh, Rita.
I'm sorry, I should have waited to be introduced to you, John.
No, I was just thinking that you'd never get to talk. Yeah, what would happen to you?
So, so it talked about, you know, understanding different classes and, and, and work with that. And then the poor. You know, again, most of us did not grow up in extreme poverty, you know, and then so that we would think differently. And one of the things they shared was that people who are in, in extreme poverty deal with crisis and you just have to deal with the crisis at this day, this time, this hour. You don't anticipate, well, I've got to get a car for later. I've got to have a job for later. I, I've just got to get food for my child today. They deal with it differently. So it's hard, you know, one of the things we discussed as we looked at that, it's hard for us to communicate and to deal with their decision-making when that's not what we do. That doesn't make any sense at all. So try and, try to help, you know, work with that and care for that. And, and when the shepherds went out, you know, we don't know, people said, oh, that's great. Wow, is that wonderful? We're so glad, you know? Or did they reject them because they were shepherds? And we, we don't know, but we do know that the word continued on. So somebody.
Listened.
Yeah. So, and so when we share too, we, we can't expect that everybody is going to respond, but some people will listen. Great, great work.
You know, they wouldn't have been used to the people, you know, dealing with the people. But just as you're saying that, I'm thinking inner city kids have no idea of what's out there beyond their own little environment, you know? They didn't know that Noblesville was so close to Indianapolis. You know, they thought I'd come from way out where to drive in. You drive everywhere, yeah. But the shepherds would have been, because of their nomadic existence, they would have been more used to traveling.
Yeah, they did do that.
And not intimidated by, you know, the travel, so that they could spread the word, I guess, is what I'm thinking, that they would have been going.
So God knows how to choose.
It's like choosing Matthew, someone who was at least somewhat educated, could keep track of things. And, you know, will never be able to think of Matthew as not that little autistic, clean shaven person like we saw in The Chosen. That's how we always picture him, but, you know.
There, um, you know, would we have the blessing of the New Testament if there weren't different perspectives of, you know, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John, you know? They give us the full picture because of their uniqueness. And again, chosen, they, they were chosen to play that.
I never put that together as the movie title. I never put that together as the movie title.
So we do not know, you know, the the big picture of, but we're all chosen to do something. Whether it's to spread the word, or, you know, to nurture, or to add something to.
Well, and Pastor Genie was talking about, we don't have the perspective of people in different classes. And I think about, we say, every Sunday, we do the Lord's Prayer, right? And there's a line in there about, and give us this day our daily bread, and we just. We all know we're gonna get half bread today.
Wouldn't be surprised, there are a lot of poor people in.
But that that's the point, that's the point. There are people that when they pray that, they're praying for bread that day because they are, like like Genie was talking about, they're not thinking about two weeks about what their schedule's gonna be, they're thinking about today and where the food's gonna come from today.
How blessed we are.
Cause we don't even think about it.
What'd you say, Rita?
I said how blessed we are.
So there's several statements in the book, and hopefully you've been able to read that or will read that. She says, "The good news may have started with the angels, but it was spread by human beings to whom the message was entrusted." So God uses angels to to start something. But that's not the end. You know, to continue on, so there's some great things about that, so.
I thought, I think of the shepherds, they might not understand it. So they went to see, check it out. Then later, when they hear a story, they might believe it, yeah.
And so for us, again, all, looking at all scripture, you know, check it out. You know, if it says to do this, if it says, try it, says to pray, says to fast, it said lots of things in scripture, we too should try it, you know, and discover, uh, including tithing, you know, giving ten percent. We had a finance person say today that you should put twenty percent of your income in for retirement. I thought, well, I already put ten percent in for.
Which do you do first?
Do what God says first. But I, I was just.
Is he a financial guy?
Yeah, 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 but but again, you know, I I just, again, I don't know anybody else's, you know, thought of it there, but like ten percent first goes to this, and then, you know, because again, you will know the blessings, you know, he promises you, you will be blessed by this, you know, as like.
So it is a great thing. God says, test me on that very subject. Put it in the, put it in the treasury and see what happens. But if you don't. You'll, I mean, I think that that's what we all need, and that's what really what Genie was talking about, we need, really need to experience that blessing directly from God.
And I've had different pastors talk about, like, well, we're gonna have them, you know, if they're giving them one percent, try for two percent, two percent, try for three, you know, I was like, but they're not gonna be blessed until they get what God has asked them to do, then they'll be blessed. You know, yeah, you increase it, and you may think, but you're gonna be blessed being faithful to God. The same thing with any call that you have, again, I'm glad you're the prayer point person, you know, the call that you have, if you're called to do that, you know, then God will bless you in so many ways, whatever you're called to do. And every one of us is called in some ways, and you will be blessed in amazing ways. So another question they ask is, how can fear hold us back from experiencing something new and amazing? Nobody's afraid of anything?
I'm afraid to answer. Stupid.
Well, I think we're afraid of failure.
Yeah, so we don't, so we don't start, yeah.
I'm afraid of understanding. You know, did I get the message right, Lord? You've just given me the burning bush, so I knew for sure. Often thinking that I was following what he wanted me to do, and it's amazing how we got roadblocks there and get you back to what he really wanted you to do, but at the time, I'm just sure that, oh, okay, I can do this, you know, I'll go forward like you want me to, and then it's like, oops, I think that I got in my own control, then I learned that I didn't follow. You know, so I don't, I don't trust myself.
But that's.
I never trusted him. I don't trust myself to perfect correctly. And he asked me directly, said, I am human.
Well, I think I shared it the last week or the week before, the situation with Dr. Clam and her mental health clinic, and how everything just fell in place. I I met with a therapist for lunch on Monday, the guy that answered the call from Fort Wayne to drive down here. And you know, everything just fell in place, and then it's over with, and I I think did did my heart, because of the situation with my daughter, push me to push, help her push that agenda, you know, I'm kinda like that. And now I'm going.
What? But but the timing could have been for one person that you guys, they've been. Yeah, but I mean, you know, and it doesn't matter how long it lasted, if that was God's plan, that that happened. There was a purpose for that period of time, whatever it was.
But that's. That's so humbling. Yes, it's so humbling to think. Because I was in a very dark place, and although I was trying to help others, it was me who was served, it was me who was helped, it was me who can now rationalize the thought process. But at the at the expense of others. And I guess I, I wanted to be more successful. Than just me, you know? And I'm not saying the journey's over, maybe this is supposed to be my quiet time and reflect and and be joyous. You know, because God has brought me other messages that way, that I'm on the edge, and I think I don't understand, and he, he shows me what I don't understand, but that is the biggest thing that I struggle with is, why is she gone? Because I loved her so much, and she was so good and so pure. And so caring. And she's gone.
Yeah, we had a woman died of cancer, she was thirty five. One of the most amazing Christians, uh, she was a dairy farmer too. Signed her from four H and everything. And she was a veterinarian. And but because she had cancer, she got to witness to more people than she ever would if she'd just been a veterinarian. She didn't get to have any children because the cancer happened so quick, and they're like, start treatments now, and didn't even get to save, you know, anything. But that also freed her hu- husband after he, she died, that he could start a fresh, you know, again, but when it first happened and everything too, it's kinda like, why is this, you know, and and she trusts it. The amazing trust that I saw her have through all this. That God was there with her, and she was gonna be okay, no matter what, whether she lived or died, she was gonna be okay. And she got to, you know, be with people. Who had cancer and encourage them, pray with them, witness to them, tell about Jesus to them. As a veterinarian, she was gonna witness the animals, you know. She she got to do more. And so I again, but like, you know, I talked with her mom, and it, cause I milked cows with her mom too, so. Trying to see the answers, I'm trying to see the why through all those, and it's not always easy, but but reflecting back and and discovering, you know, God took care of them no matter what, and we're all gonna die one day. It's like, yeah, if you die in your thirties, that seems too soon. If you have children yet, that seems too soon, you know, but uh, and knowing that God cares for them every step of the way is the important part too.
Well, I do believe, you know, Jennifer was so dedicated to her patients, and she had COVID, I don't know how many times, and broke both legs, and I mean, she, she is at peace, she believed in the Lord, she is resting in His arms, I know that. But the people that are left behind, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Were so selfish.
Yeah. And it will other people step up to, you know, continue to work with that, and for her family too. You know.
That's tough.
You know.
And think of, you loved her so much. Shows you how great a blessing she was to be in your life, I mean.
And how all that happened was that I was taking care of Ruth Flatter. And I wanted to change doctors because the other doctor, Ruth could just call and say, I need this, and the doctor would prescribe it, so I had to get her to a different doctor. I knew Jennifer from church just to see her, that was, that was it, you know, and her family, just to see them, and so I started taking Ruth, one time I was there, and I had a sinus infection. And Jennifer just told Ruth, she goes, I think we need to take care of your caregiver. So then I become a patient there myself, when Ruth passed away. Then she also had an employee that her husband had terminal cancer, so she asked me if I would fill in for a bit. So I worked for her six months. And then at church, she said, I think I'm gonna open a mental health clinic, and I said, I will give you two days a week. And that's how that all transpired, and you can't, you can't convince me that that wasn't all in God's plan, how that came together.
He that's faithful today will be faithful tomorrow. Even when we can't see it.
Well, he's gonna have to write me a note, cause I'm.
So, uh, from Isaiah chapter forty, again, that there's all kinds of scripture that shares. A voice cries out in the wilderness, prepare the way of the Lord, make straight in the desert a highway for our God. Every valley shall be lifted up, and every mountain and hill be made low. The uneven ground shall become level, and the rough places of a plain, then the glory of the Lord shall be revealed, and all the people shall see it together, for the mouth of the Lord has spoken. So Isaiah the prophet, which I'll be preaching on this Sunday, shares lots of ways that that God is going to be, he is now and will be, you know. He shares information about that, that's what's coming up, so. Uh, then, uh, the author continues on, five hundred years before the birth of Jesus, the first readers of this passage from Isaiah understood it to mean that God was making a way through the impassable wilderness for the people to return home to Jerusalem from the exile in Babylon. So nineteen centuries after Jesus's lifetime, Martin Luther King quoted a verse from the passage in his famous, I Have a Dream speech, to refer to the work ensuing in civil rights for all. As Christians, we often read this passage during Advent, to refer to the work of preparing the way for the coming of the Lord. So as it is in Advent and soon Christmas, how are we still preparing our way? For Jesus coming, for the angels singing, for everything happening, so. For seeing Christ, how are we preparing ourselves?
Going to church and reading the Bible.
Yeah.
Daddy.
Maybe helping others, giving to organizations to help others.
Those are all good things. Anybody else?
Focusing on, and even if you're reading the same scripture over, and maybe you could read that Isaiah forty passage over and over. Isaiah nine, where he talks about wonderful counselor, and pour unto us, a child is born, that thought just keeps going through my mind over and over again. What am I doing with that child that was born?
I decided in week two that this book is not for the uninitiated. Most of you have not been to seminary. This is, this is high, high, highly spiritual, more than academic, it's just. He did very well, I don't know how to say it. And the average, I don't mean this in a condensating way, but a lot of people I don't think can handle this book. You know, and I feel like I'm privileged, you know, I said, boy, I heard that sixty years ago. I said sixty years ago?
But I'm wondering.
I think I'm fifty.
I'm wondering, Ron, is everybody reads it at their own level? Because I think she does a very good job of giving, like the Charlie Brown example with this one, giving something where you know, maybe not at the same level of understanding, but still the spiritualness and that helping you to understand the, you know, the essence of what she's trying to get across. I think she does put in some everyday common things, and I I've been impressed with that.
Yeah, that's, she was the professor, or took homiletics, which is preaching, and she relates. And when you can relate to common ordinary people. Which you know, if people, if they don't, oh, I hated that in Chinatown, well, I'm not getting fed. Well, I didn't wanna hear that. Bless you, maybe it's time for you to go someplace else where you can get fed.
I I think it's up to each of us to open our mind and our heart, we'll we'll be fed at different times, but we it, it's really a personal thing.
There's a need out there, there's people who are hungry.
But each of us can read this book and be touched differently. I think the more knowledge you have, the more you are touched by its word.
Let's watch your video, yeah. You ready?
Yeah.
I almost forgot it, so. There's so much good stuff in here.
I think for for that, whether I know it's certainly true for me. Um, to be pregnant at Christmas time is, seems it seems so holy, and I know this connected me with Mary in ways that I never expected. The first year my husband and I were married, we discovered right before Christmas that we were going to have a baby. And we were a little bit older parents, I felt, we felt a little bit maybe like Zachariah, Elizabeth. But we felt as if this child that's gonna be born to us was a divine gift, and we were so excited, we already loved this baby more than anyone could, and we were so excited about the birth of this child. And the hope that we had for this child that was yet to come and yet to be, it connected me so much in that moment to the story of Jesus and of course to Mary, and the pondering in her heart that she had to have during that season of of nurturing a child in her womb. And what a holy, holy, holy thing that was, I know it was for me, and so I connected so strongly with the Christmas story, especially Mary's story, um, during that time in my life. I can imagine when Mary and Joseph, you knew they were gonna have this child, that they had dreams of what the idyllic delivery would be, their idyllic first moments together. I would assume that they imagined that Jesus would be born. I would assume that they imagined that Jesus would be born in Nazareth, surrounded by a adoring family and friends. Maybe he would be delivered by the same midwife that delivered each of them, because it was a small town. All of those expectations were dashed, and all of that was thwarted when there was a census called. So Caesar Augustus called for a census, and that everyone had to go back to their hometowns to be registered. And I'm sure they're wondering when they get to Bethlehem, like where, where are we gonna stay? Where, will there be a midwife there? Will there be a place for us? And so they end up staying, the scripture tells us, uh, that she gives birth to her child, wraps him in swaddling clothes and lying, lays him in a manger, and of course, no one dreams of having their child in a stable. Um, and, and the scripture says that they laid him in a manger because there was no room for them in the inn. When we look at the word inn, uh, in Greek, it can also mean guest room. So it could be that Mary and Joseph, as they were traveling, we're probably, we're gonna stay maybe with relatives in, in a guest room in a house. What we envision though is Mary and Joseph knocking on hotel doors and the innkeeper coming out and saying, we have no room, it's like these callous people who have no room to let this pregnant woman have a baby. But perhaps this was an act of gracious hospitality on the homeowner's part. Because you see in every, in the homes there, attached to the home, not outside in a separate barn, but attached to the home, would have been a room where the animals would have been brought in for the night. So for Mary and Joseph, this probably didn't seem like the perfect Christmas, and I know we all have moments in our own lives where our dreams of what Christmas should be are dashed. And at our church, we offer a service called the Service of the Longest Night. And it's for people for whom their lives in this moment in time are not perfect. This service offers people a space to understand that Jesus came into a world that was full of darkness. They came into his own parents' world where their hopes were not met in what they thought Christmas should be. But the most important thing of all to remember is that Jesus came into the darkness of the world to bring light. Well, and we learn in the Gospel of John that the light shines in the darkness, and the darkness did not and will not overcome it. And that is what this, this, this Service of the Longest Night is about, to remind us of the light of Christ in a world that cannot be extinguished. We see the scene cut to shepherds. Shepherds, who the scripture said, are living with their flocks, watching over their flocks by night in the fields. So we see that they're living in the field, and they are living in darkness, which of course reflects a scripture from Isaiah, Isaiah nine two, which says, the people who walked in darkness have seen a bright light. Those who lived in a land of deep darkness, on them light has shined. For these shepherds, who are symbolically living in a land of darkness, an angel appears and the glory of the Lord shone around about them. And I love what the King James Version says about them, it said, and they were sore afraid. Of course, the angel says to them, as the angel does to everyone that the angel appears to. Fear not, do not be afraid, for see, I bring you good news of great joy for all people. For you, for me, for those who live on the lowest rungs of society, and not just those who live, who are, who are wealthy and who are royal. See, I bring you tidings and good news for all people. Today is born for you in the city of David, born to you in the city of David, the Savior, which is in the Sinai. And so, um, the, and, and then immediately, there's a host, a heavenly host, then join an angel saying glory to God in the highest heaven, and on earth, peace to all whom God favors. After the shepherds hear this glorious announcement of the birth of Jesus, the angels tell them that this will be a sign for you. You will find the child wrapped in bands of cloth and lying in a manger. And immediately then after the angels leave, the shepherds say, let us go to Bethlehem and find this, about which the angels have spoken to us about. And so they go and they find Mary and Joseph and the baby lying in a manger. And it says they were amazed and that they told everyone about what had been spoken to them by the angels. And I think we can gloss over that when we are, are reading the Christmas story and we're just seeing this beautiful imagery of the baby and Joseph and Mary and animals gently gathered round and their, their newfound friends, the shepherds are, are gathering around the baby as well. But we need to take note of that they told, they went and shared this story about what had been spoken to them with all that they met, and everyone who heard the story was amazed. What we find about the shepherds is that they go from being shepherds to messengers, from being shepherds to angels. They spread the news, the good news. They are first recipients of the good news of the birth of Christ, and they can't wait to share it with everyone. I think that that is a message for us in this season, is that as we, as we anticipate Christ's birth, and as we see Christ being born in us, and we hear the messages of the angels all around us, that we would share whatever good news we have heard and experienced in our lives, so that others would know the good news of the Messiah. The good news of the Messiah has come for all people. That's good news for all people. When you think about the, the four appearances of the angels in these gospel stories, I think there's a lot that these angels all have in common. One, of course, is that they're all messages from God. They all as Gabriel said, stand in the presence of God, and we should be willing to hear and to heed what they can say. I think they're messages to us, if we go through these stories, we get it. We need to believe sometimes in the unbelievable. We need to find our voice, as Zachariah did, to share the good news that's been shared with us. We need to, um, as Mary did, of course, listen attentively to what God has to say to us and be willing to answer the call, wherever we may be called. Whether here I am, the servant of the Lord, to be with me, my glory, your word. And if we are like Joseph, um, I think the message of, of the angels tell us again, let's listen and be attentive, take the time to listen and be attentive to what God has to say to us and act upon that. To protect the Christ child that's been born to us and to go where it's called. And finally, um, with the message of the angels, all of those messages from Zachariah, the Mary, to Joseph, to the shepherds, is a message of hope that the light has come into the world, and that we can go from being the shepherds who hear the good news to being angels, that we are to be angels of Christmas.
Angels as in messengers and joy and praise, not actual angels, but, but the, you know, that characteristic of them, the praise that they have, the glory that they have, the obedience. So, um, when we talked, um, previously when the angel came to Joseph, one of the things too, that, that, you know, when he was told, you know, you need to go to Egypt. Uh, again, he did protect, he did listen, that, that was a strange thing to say, go to Egypt. But he listened, he was listening to what God had told them to do. So sometimes there are different things, go here, go do this. You know, Joseph listened very carefully to that as well. The, uh, story, one of the things I heard about from Charlie Brown's Christmas too, when Linus quotes the scripture and then a little child memorizes it, you know, all, all of it, Luke chapter two, verses one to twenty, he's got it all. And I'm like, wow, that's impressive. But I heard later on, if you see it, Linus is one who always held his blanket that was his
Security.
When he read the scripture, he put it down. He was sharing the message. He had total power from God, because otherwise he always held on to that. You know, and it, it was something that, I don't know, you know, if they planned it for sure, but someone said, did you notice that? Like, oh, no, I never noticed that. I watched Charlie Brown's Christmas. I love watching those things, you know? When he was sharing the scripture, he had God's power, God's praise, and that's what we can have too. Again, we can be like angels and bringing a message and having the praise and sharing the glory and knowing that in a powerful way, um, and continuing listening. Oh, he's got it.
Requested. And there were the same country shepherds abiding in the fields, keeping watch over their flock by night. But lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them. The glory of the Lord turned around upon them, and they were sore afraid, and the angel said unto them, fear not. For behold, I bring you tidings of great joy. For unto you is born this day in the city of David, a Savior, just Christ the Lord. And this shall be a sign unto you. He shall find the babe wrapped in swaddling clothes, lying in a manger. And suddenly there was with the angel, a multitude of the heavenly hosts praising God and saying, glory to God in the highest. And on earth, peace would flow toward men.
Who's John?
That's what Christmas is all about. I'm sorry, Ron.
I'm sure you'll wanna watch the Smurfs Christmas.
Is there a message there?
Don't be blue.
Amen.
Thank you, John.
That was great. That was great. All right, so we'll have a great Christmas. I hope that you continue to invite folks. Um, we still have Sunday morning, Sunday, uh, afternoon, Sunday evening, Christmas Eve. All in one day, so it's a great time. So we've got extra books, yeah, one extra book if you wanna share with somebody. And if you haven't read your book, go ahead and read, there's lots of good stuff in there, so that you share it. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting us listen in.
My voice.
No one ever said that.
Probably not, then.
Thanks for bringing dessert.
Yeah, thank you for the, mm.